All right, the council would like to recognize Mary Weiss.
I'm here.
No visual.
It's frozen, but I'm...
Frozen.
Thank you. Three things I'm going to talk about tonight, all short. Dewey Avenue, the mayor drove me down Dewey Avenue Friday night to get down to the blast. We went through that one block where you take your light in your hands in the dark. If anyone comes around that bend fast, you're done. If anyone comes out of the driveway, which happened to me tonight, I stopped and the man who was in the driveway stopped. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here. They park on both sides of the road from Bang Street to the McMillan Street. They all...oh, no. One house does not have a driveway nor a garage. That's it. Out of the entire block, they all have garages, they all have driveways, and that one, you know, at the evening time, they just pack that street. If there's an emergency, you're going to really have a problem. Almost had one tonight. Second one is the same old thing. Please urge Pendott. I went up to see a friend's house on Navy Road, just over the border in Upper St. Clair, and they are building apartment buildings across the street. We need to be after Pendott strongly to have them put a roadway across the highways, Upper St. Clair Route 519, Route 79, and the new one that gets there gets finished. I ask you, please, do that. The other one, I have a compliment. I want to compliment everybody who was involved in the blast of winter on Friday night. I was just very, very impressed with it. Frozen. But Saturday morning, 8:58, I'm driving down to get up on Washington Avenue, you would never have known that anything went on here the night before. Now, it was clean. It was really excellent, and I thank everyone who had a part in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Council recognizes Bob Frye.
The last month, as I was leaving, primarily, I was here last month about the solution to the flooding problem, and as I was leaving, a couple of people mentioned something like transportation has nothing to do with the proposal that the Borough Council entertaining to solve the flood problem. Excuse me, I wanted to disagree with that and remind you once again that the proposal I'm suggesting does not eliminate the Bowery Road from the cement tunnel made to the McLaughlin interchange. It will be, it allows the creek to remain in its present position, perhaps deep and wide. And the important advantage of my proposal, maybe the proposal you seem to favor can be modified, is I'm suggesting that the present Bowery Road, which is two lanes wide, be kept two lanes wide in one direction all the way to Washington Avenue, and that the Baldwin Street be become two lanes in the opposite direction, and they can connect down here somewhere. I want to, the thing I'm trying to get at is, there's a direct relationship between the quality of life of the people in this community, the taxes they pay, the benefits that they receive, and it's related directly to the traffic congestion problem of the family community for 50 years. I agree with Mary. I think you have got to open up, you have got to develop a comprehensive solution to the traffic congestion problem here. It can't be ignored. We have a mile of traffic twice, three times a day going out a mile in four directions from a community, which, by the way, as I mentioned the last time I was here, that's what caused the collapse of the business district in the '60s. That's what caused the great reduction in the tax revenue production in the community, and that's also what resulted in the taxes on the individual, excuse me, individual families and individual people in the community being raised as high as they are here. I think I gave this, I'm not sure if I gave this to you once before, but this is the, these are the solutions that Bridgell's traffic problem could have been done in 2005, '08, '08, '18, '19, '92, '19, '88, and '19, '69. They're all the same. And I think because, I'd like to incidentally, the comments, I've taken quotations directly from each of those seven studies. The pages are listed there. If you want me to get the original story, I'll be glad to. But we have a great potential to become a very wealthy community and greatly reduce the taxes. But the flood, the solution that you choose for the, for solving the flood problem is essential. Another thing I might mention, last Wednesday, I went to the University of Pittsburgh's presentation of their solution to the Bridgell flood problem, and it was more impressive than that major presentation that Pendott made at the fire department about, how many a year ago about some of the improvements in the Decan's Court. It was rather spectacular. There, the students' solution to the Bridgell flooding problem is very similar to the solution that was given to us in 1980 by Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Sources, and which is very similar to this proposal. Again, I understand that a retention pond is always a logical consideration for any community that's having a flood problem, but the retention pond, by the way, this is the, this is the proposal that you're considering. I know you can change and modify it. I hope you aren't fixed on this, but this is the proposal where the entire Baldwin Street area is made potential flood retention pond, and the buildings on the, on the south side of Baldwin Street are to be placed on 12 for high pedestals. The retention pond, excuse me, to protect Bridgell, don't give up a business district that can be redeveloped and be made twice as successful as our central business district. The retention pond should be built 800 yards north of Bridgell and McLaughlin Road. There's a 20-acre spot there that is now presently grass and trees. I know, I understand that a real estate developer has purchased it and wants $3 million for it. I don't know if he's aware of the fact that, I've been told that there's a horizontal mine shaft going under the land, but I, you can't, you've got to force the state and the county and the federal government to make that the area that protects the people in Bridgell from the massive flood problems that we're going to have incidentally.
Bob, is that area in St. Clair?
Yes, it is in St. Clair.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same property.
Yeah, Joe, you know what the...
I know, I know where you're coming from.
You know, it's across the...
Just making sure it was St. Clair.
Yes, absolutely. But that doesn't mean that you can't obviously approach it. But I think the advantage of the proposal, the proposal I'm making about making the flood solution problem, or the flood solution in Bridgell include, solution to the traffic congestion is, right here, you have McLaughlin Run, Cook School Road, and Bowery Road all coming to that point. You can, if you do this correctly, the way I've outlined it here, you can reduce the traffic congestion and turn Baldwin Street into potentially a great, potential central business district. One more thing, one other thing, too. And this is, this again goes back to what I think is another site or an area that was made by Bridgell officials starting 50 years ago. This is, I know this drawing isn't large enough, but I think you'll be able to identify what I'm saying. Excuse me. This is Route 19 through Upper St. Clair and Mount Lebanon. This is Washington Pike through Collier, Bridgell, and Safad. Do you see all these heavy black, well, here, let me describe this chronologically. In the late '60s, I-79 was built parallel to Washington Pike and Bridgell. Within months after that occurred, in other words, after when I-79 was took to the Parkway West as a new ride into Pittsburgh, people beginning from the Boyer-Schurter interchange on 19 all the way into the Liberty Tunnels were able to avoid 52 traffic lights. In a matter of 90 days, the 40,000 people, consumer motorists, that made the Upper St. Clair and Mount Lebanon business districts what they were and are practically collapsed. This, shortly after that occurred, the Grace, the Southfield Village Mall has been sold three times by then. My point is, when, during that period of time, say 10 to 15 years after all of those consumer motorists going through Safad, Bridgell, and Collier, do you see all these heavy black lines? These were all the four-lane-wide roads that Pendott built leading to these three, these four red squares there. That's the mall, the shopping center next to it, and these are the village, where the Mount Lebanon shops. There was no traffic congestion problem there, but what they did, the building of those roads, which had to be $100 million or more, not to mention the Mass Transit Line, it cost $300,000, it was built to the south entrance of the Southfield Village Mall. The access to that area was much greater than Bridgell's, obviously, but when the traffic congestion started occurring in Bridgell because of our, I guess, the first shopping center in Allegheny County, which is very southern, the Pendott and the Bridgell officials made no attempt to get Pendott to solve, to implement any of these problems. The recommendations from Bykman and Associates started in 1969, and every year, they proposed the same thing, to extend Shady Avenue 220 yards, make it two one-way couple, three-lane roads, and what the reason that this, excuse me, the reason that this is so important, doing it this way, is by getting, by creating this juncture and doubling the traffic flow here, it's very easy to complete the two-way couple, at least from the Bowery Road intersection toward I-79 and back. The income to the community would be enormous, and I'm working, I want to mention one other thing, too, by the way. The average income to the families in Bridgell, $55,000 a year. The communities surrounding us are a little above or a little below $100,000. But the people in Bridgell are paying 50% more of their $55,000 incomes than the communities around us. If we had a highly tax revenue-producing business district, that wouldn't be the case. Also, the, also, if you divide the budgets of all four, the communities we're talking about by the number of people in it, the people in Upper St. Clair, each person gets $2,300 spent on them, the other communities around us is $1,700, Bridgell is $1,000. You've got to understand that the traffic congestion problem has to be solved in order to solve your financial problems.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your time.
Pat, Blake.
Hello. I know. It's a long, it's a long agenda. Many of us knew William Calusi, Bill Calusi. I amongst some of you have the pleasure of serving with him on council and later as Mr. Calusi was not a trained engineer. Mr. Calusi was a mechanic. Mr. Calusi was also very dedicated to his community and cared about it. And Mr. Calusi repeatedly and repeatedly, repeatedly again, came to council, both as a citizen and as a member of council, and said, "Clean up the creek. Remove the debris from the creek. Get the debris out of the creek. Laurie, Joe, Mike, send public works down into the creek and get rid of the debris." Before he passed away, Mr. Calusi worked with Joe Sights, our engineer, to come up with a plan for, what it was called, trash rack job?
Yes.
For a trash rack. Now, I must admit that I was skeptical. Personally, I looked at it and said, "I don't know that the debris is the only thing or the major thing causing the flooding in our community." On Wednesday, I also had the pleasure of going to the University of Pittsburgh to watch a group of students. We are very lucky. Dr. John Euler, who I only thought of as a historian, because those are the articles that I have read. Dr. Euler is a civil engineer, is an engineer, and with the University of Pittsburgh, and we are so lucky because two groups of students did their senior project for the Borough of Bridgell. One was on the McLaughlin Flood. It will be available at some point. I would encourage you to listen to the 45-minute presentation. The individuals compared the June 20th flooding to a September rainfall. The end conclusion, and I leave it to you to take your own conclusions away from their presentation, what I left with was Bill Calusi was right. They pointed out that the debris, that the, that the creek and its orifices, the bridges, appear to be capable of handling the floodwaters. Now, whether those calculations are accurate, they're students, leave it to others to double check, but if they're right, cleaning the debris out of the creek in Bridgell and blocking debris from coming into our community from upstream would appear to be a vital part of the solution here and a very low-cost part of the solution. So I would ask our manager and our engineer to please take a look at the project that was approved by council several years ago, and that if there is something blocking it externally, to make a point of reporting on that.
We actually met with DEP regarding the trash rack and the banking application. We have to obtain a joint permit from the Conservation District and the DEP, and we're moving forward.
And are you getting any kind of, because I believe that there's a lot of external support.
They had no problem.
Excellent. Excellent. That is very good.
See, where he's way ahead of you.
Yes.
On the model.
Yes, I wish she was ahead of Councilman Calusi. Because he was the one, and it is really, it is really nice to remember him and his contribution.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. Minutes. Motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of November 12, 2018, regular meeting as submitted. Bruce.
I'll say it.
And Bill Henderson, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. Motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of November 20, 2018, budget workshop meeting as submitted.
I'll say it.
Bruce and Bill again. All those in favor. All those opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance number 1005, a motion to the Borough Council regarding ordinance number 1005. An ordinance amending ordinance number 998 pertaining to general rates charged for sewage service within the Borough of Bridgell with the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority. Increase of additional 52 cents per 1,000 gallons of water usage and $1.07 per quarterly bill increase for service charge. The Borough proposes no increase in 2019. Alphacene's rate in 2018 was $7.42 per 1,000 gallons. The Borough's rate was $6.23 per 1,000 gallons for a total of $13.65 per 1,000 gallons, and the Alphacene service charge was $15.60 per quarter. The 2019 rates, Alphacene's rates will go to $7.94 per 1,000 gallons. The Bridgell Borough rate will stay at $6.23 per 1,000 gallons with a total of $14.17 per 1,000 gallons, and the Alphacene service charge will go to $16.69 per quarter. A public hearing was held earlier tonight on December 10 to receive public comment. The ordinance has been duly advertised. And BJ, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 1006, a motion to the Borough Council regarding ordinance number 1006. An ordinance fixing the tax rate and levying borough taxes for the fiscal year 2019 and reenacting all other revenue acts. No increase in borough real estate taxes are proposed for the budget year 2019. The ordinance has been duly advertised.
So move.
Bruce?
Say it.
And Joe, give that to Joe. Joe Costano, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll come back. We're going to skip resolution number 2018-12 and come back at the end. Resolution number 2018-13, motion to Borough Council regarding resolution number 2018-13, resolution approving the request of Racktop LLC for transfer of liquor licenses, number R-11050, from Whittaker Borough into the Borough of Bridgell and taking it onto McLaughlin Road. Public hearing was held on December 10, 2018, to receive public comment.
So move.
Say it. Joe Costano and Nina Fitchelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 2018-14, a motion to the Borough Council regarding resolution number 2018-14, a resolution establishing a fee of $53 per quarter for the weekly collection, hauling, and disposal of solid waste and recyclables within the Borough of Bridgell.
So move.
Bruce Galarducci?
Say it.
And Joe Costano, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion, I'm sorry, resolution number 2018-15, a motion to the Borough Council regarding resolution number 2018-15, a resolution authorizing the council president to enter into agreement with Pendott for manhole work on State Route 3034, Charter Street. The Borough of Bridgell will supply the material, and Pendott will incorporate the work into their contract. Agreement has been provided upon receipt of the letter and resolution and will be a non-reimbursement type agreement.
I'm going to say it.
You have a comment, BJ?
I'm just curious, I don't know where, is that a part of the bigger project?
I think that's a separate project. It's the milliner we're servicing at Short Tears Creek from probably right around, right aid all the way up to the intersection, the main intersection.
Does it need...
How's less than cost?
I don't, I think it said not to exceed $25,000 is what the agreement is.
Well, isn't it, as far as the cost for us, it's just going to be for what we own?
Okay, yeah.
As far as supplying the materials for the manholes and rises and anything like that, they're going to do the work, and it's a non, you know, the agreement is saying, you give us the material, we'll do the work, and that's it, no money.
Are, did they find any, like, I know they were doing cord drilling samples, did they ever find anything out? I know they were looking at the guardrails, or are they incorporating that part there?
We never received any information. We can check.
All right. Okay. All right, here's a, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number two, Baldwin Street Backflow Preventer Contract, a motion to the Borough Council regarding the rebuttal of current estimate number two, Baldwin Street Black Backflow Preventer Contract to Osiris, revised in the amount of $4,154 for work completed to date. This has been reviewed and approved by Engineer Sights.
I'm going to...
Who is that?
Joe.
Galarducci and Bruce Galarducci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number two and final, 2018 pavement maintenance program contract A, motion to Borough Council regarding the rebuttal of current estimate number two and final, 2018 pavement maintenance and maintenance program contract A, because like paving incorporated in the amount of $43,737.79 for work completed. Estimate has been reviewed and approved by Engineer Sights.
So move.
Nino and Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Labor agreement, full-time public work and public works employees in Borough of, in the Borough of Bridgell. Motion to the Borough Council regarding the labor agreement between the full-time Bridgell Borough public works employees and the Borough of Bridgell for the calendar years 2019, 2020, and 2021. Agreement includes the following: three-year contract wage increase, 2.5%, 2.5%, and 2.5%.
So move.
Say it.
Bill Henderson and Nino, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Employee handbook, a motion to Borough Council regarding the updated Borough, Bridgell Borough employee handbook as revised. We're going to, I like to make a request to table this. We just received it and we're going to...
I agree.
Okay. A motion made by Nino, who's the second?
Yeah.
And BJ, all those in favor, table it. All those opposed? All right. Calendar year 2019, meeting dates advertised. Motion to the Borough Council approve the following meeting dates for the calendar year 2019 and advertising the same. Council meetings will be held the second Monday of each month, agenda meeting at 6:30 PM, and a regular meeting at 7:00. The budget workshop meetings will be held on November 19, 2019, at 6:00 PM. The Bridgell Parking Authority meetings will be held the third Monday of each month at 7:30 PM. The planning commission meetings are scheduled for the last Monday of each month at 7:00 PM during the months of January through April and June through October. The May meeting will be held on May 20, 2019. The November and December meetings will be combined and held on December 2, 2019. Zoning hearings will be scheduled as...
So move.
Bruce?
Say it.
And Nino, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Exoneration of 2015 delinquent real estate taxes, a motion to the Borough Council regarding the exoneration of Borough Real Estate Tax Collector Anne Marie Parise for the calendar year 2015 uncollected real estate taxes. The 2015 real estate tax total is $10,699.70.
I have a question.
Yes?
Out of that, those monies, we hand that over to Jordan Tax Service, right? So if there's a house that's sold and we collect some of that money, we'd say it's a thousand dollars. Out of that thousand dollars, how much do we owe?
Do we what?
Would we... Would we get out of that thousand? Cause I know we don't get the full amount, correct?
Yes, we get, we get the amount plus interest plus costs. And, uh, Jordan, um, then charges us ten percent for collection, but the interest and the costs, um, exceed the, what we pay Jordan tax.
So that ten percent would be taken out of our cut?
Then the collection ordinance is passed on, all those collection costs to the...
In addition to Jordan?
Including Jordan's costs first, that he's already, their costs get passed on to be dead.
The cost, the cost, yes, we receive, I said it, we receive the lienable real estate penalties, interest, and costs, which are Jordan's costs.
Yes.
And then, um, we pay Jordan those costs, so we receive those.
Okay.
So we're make up if we collect?
Well, that was my, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. Just curious on if we, if and when we do collect that, would we actually get the full amount or we would get out or something like that? Okay, thank you.
Is there... I'll make, I'll make. Uh, Joe and Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Billless, uh, motion of the Borough Council regarding the, uh, December two thousand eighteen billless.
I'll move.
Uh, Joe?
Second.
And Joe. Joe and Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, payrolls, motion of the Borough Council approve the payrolls of December twelfth, sorry, December fourteenth, twenty-one, twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen, and January fourth and eleventh, two thousand nineteen. So move. Uh, Bruce?
Second.
And BJ, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, monthly reports, uh, motion to accept and pay any commissions due to two thousand eighteen real estate tax collector. I'll move. Joe?
Second.
And Nino, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the October two thousand eighteen financial report. I'll move. Bruce Calorucci and Bruce, all those in favor? Motion carries. All those opposed? Motion carries. Right. Motion to accept the November two thousand eighteen police report. So move. Uh, Bill Henderson?
Second.
And Bruce Calorucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, real estate tax refund, uh, motion of the Borough Council regarding the following real estate tax refund due to a change in the assessment as requested by the real estate tax collector, uh, year two thousand eighteen block loss two five five dash H dash two seven nine in the amount of two hundred dollars and two hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy cents, uh, to S J Group, uh, copy the official change order as attached to the request. So move. Uh, Bruce Calorucci?
Second.
And Nino, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, you wanna go to the data reports? Or do you wanna do it later? Before you, uh...
I'll be close. Yeah, on the administration, I'm gonna postpone.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah, good session, all right. We'll be back shortly. Thank you. Uh, motion for, uh, the budget, uh, Joe has a presentation.
Uh, the finance committee met several times and then we, uh, had the workshop, I said the middle of November, middle of November, and we came up with, uh, some different slides that we wanted to address, uh, on, uh, decisions as well as what we did in two thousand eighteen and made our decisions for two thousand nineteen. Uh, so we just have these few slides that we, uh, wanted to go over. Uh, as everybody knows, the duties of the borough are the administration, financial services, police, fire department, um, and so on, with the, all of the different public works and engineering and code enforcement and maintenance by public works and supporting the library, supporting the fire department and the police, and, um, recycling and waste collection. Um, as far as the two thousand eighteen accomplishments, uh, we negotiated the police and public works collective bargaining agreements. Uh, we continue to work on the sanitary sewer repairs, lining and C T beam, uh, the lines. Uh, task two and three of the Baldwin Street Corridor project were funded and, uh, uh, that report is coming to us in the near future. Uh, the MS four stormwater compliance is ongoing, that's a large ordeal and continues to, uh, us to keep working on. Uh, we did some pavement, uh, maintenance projects. Uh, we did, uh, one of the things in two thousand eighteen that we had was we wanted to do some restoration on the exterior of this building in addition to the interior. Uh, mo, as before I even should've said, most of this work was either done or was in the process of being done, um, before the flood. Uh, obviously, uh, as soon as the flood happened, Lori pretty much stopped, uh, writing checks and, and, uh, all of the different things that we were, had budgeted that weren't necessary, we postponed. The interior was one of those. Uh, the new police car was purchased, the, uh, backflow preventers of the phase one were completed, and we did approve the volunteer firefighter tax credit program. So those are some of the accomplishments we had. Um, as well as we have the Pendot Greenlight Go program, that's, uh, being implemented. Lori, is that targeted for this year?
Uh, we actually, um, these are contracts with the notice to proceed that I signed today, so...
So, so we're really close to that, so hopefully that will help some of the, um, different things that go on on Route fifty. Uh, and then obviously the timeline has been set for the Charter Street and Bridge expansion, uh, timeline, uh, set for two thousand twenty. Uh, as far as public safety, the police, uh, Bridgeville Police Chief, uh, supplied me some information of forty-one hundred calls through October, uh, as well as, uh, keeping involved in the community, either through social media or very positive influence with, uh, a lot of our citizens of the borough. Uh, the fire department had a hundred and twenty-five hires approximately in training for their members and reported, responded approximately five hundred calls. Now, obviously this, uh, number was a little bit inflated due to the flood, but, um, that's a, five hundred calls is, uh, an awful lot, uh, for, for one year. Uh, as far as, uh, the biggest call was the two thousand eighteen destructive flooding. Uh, everybody's seen a lot of these different pictures, but, uh, the, the biggest, uh, take on this is the flood expenses and the mitigation were three hundred and ninety-seven dollar, yeah, ninety-seven dollars, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand thirty-six dollars, um, so far, as far as the, uh, expenses that we had to, to use to recover from that June flood. Um, and to add to that, these are some of the large expenses that we had in two thousand eighteen. These are the main expenses, the larger ones, uh, which is almost one point eight million Um, what are the plans for two thousand nineteen? When we met for, uh, for the finance committee, we said, all right, what are some of the things that we can spend money on, but knowing that we need to keep expenses very, very low because our reserves are almost to a minimum? Uh, hazard mitigation design and projects, uh, Lori and Joe's sites have been working very digitally, uh, one of the examples with, uh, Pat was talking about, uh, Lori and Joe have been working ever since July on that, that aspect. Uh, the stormwater management is gonna be an ongoing program for, for many years, uh, McLaughlin Run Park restroom upgrades, as well as those ever popular, much-needed Charter Park restroom upgrades. Um, and, um, notes on the park, Charter Park, Lori, you got a nice-sized grant for a large portion of that.
Yes.
So...
Four thousand.
Yeah, so that was, that's almost a minimal cost to us, I remember, correct? Uh, Washington Avenue and Charter Street design, those expenses, uh, continue and, and are ready for the two thousand twenty construction. Uh, the Santory sewer lining, uh, and repairs are continuing, the phase two of the black flow preventer, uh, continues. Obviously, our pavement maintenance program, uh, as mentioned, the adaptive light project installation and a modest approach to spending to rebuild the reserves is the key, um, this year. So that's one thing, when somebody approaches Lori to spend some money, we have to sit back and say, is this something that, that we really have to have in two thousand nineteen? Okay, um, so out of that, what are our largest expenses that we're anticipating? Uh, our portion of the adaptive street lighting is the fifty-three grand, the MS four stormwater compliance, uh, the McLaughlin Grant project, we have that money set aside, correct Lori?
Yes.
Um, the prod, the expansion for the, the Charter Street and the widening, uh, the sewer lining and backflow preventers, and then obviously the pavement maintenance programs. Again, those are just the large expenses in addition to the benefits of the employees and, and salaries and all those things, but these ones are one point four million. Uh, as far as just a, a history that we have over the last few years, um, I'm not gonna dwell on this much, that, uh, right now our revenues are only ninety percent of the two thousand eighteen budget. Um, in talking at the finance committee, uh, a lot of times we receive a little bump in regards to the taxes at the end of the year, uh, because some people, uh, pay, uh, their taxes right before, it's sometime in December, that last quarter of those taxes. Uh, but, uh, as you can see in November, uh, we did, uh, or as you can see with our budget, it's twelve percent, uh, higher, um, from seventeen, well, that's unfortunately we had to raise taxes last year, and boy, I don't know where we would be if we didn't raise taxes last year, uh, with this, uh, unexpected flood that we had. As far as the expenditures, um, as you can see, we, uh, have definitely decreased. As soon as we had those expenditures, we decreased, uh, our spendings and we're anticipating being about seven percent lower, uh, in two thousand seventeen, and that's even with those mitigation, uh, with the flood on there as well. So kudos to Lori in making sure to tighten her belt and, uh, borough's belt, excuse me, not your belt. Um, and, uh, making sure we have, uh, controlled expenses, uh, probably the biggest thing, um, that you have to watch for to be, uh, very successful, and we've, we've done that rather well this year. Uh, what does this mean to the Bridgeville Borough? Um, it means that we're estimating the eighteen, uh, revenues to come in at about three point two and the expenditures to come in about three point two, around thirty-three thousand dollars, uh-oh.
It's a nice picture.
It's nice. As you ride off, it's... Waves here, interesting. Yeah, I want you to...
Pat, what did I say?
You have a flat flow.
Flat, oh, okay. Um, so we have about thirty-three thousand dollars as a deficiency is what is anticipated. Again, due to the decrease of our budget, the borough really, really needs to, uh, build back those, uh, reserves, uh, due to the unanticipated flooding expenses. Uh, and as of January nineteen, our, our general fund balance is around nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. Now, that's to carry us until July when we receive taxes again, so that, that counts for salaries, it counts for all the different expenses, which, uh, Lori, in your, in our meetings, you said this is probably the lowest it's ever been.
It is, it's been the lowest since I've been managing.
So, so with that, uh-oh, come on.
It's a village.
Yeah.
I'll sing.
Oh. We gotta get the roar to come back? We're gonna pipe it.
Sound just like a...
Okay, I gotta hurry up. Uh, we are not going to be increasing taxes this year. Um, yeah, none of the mills on the building, mills, uh, will not increase of the land. Um, so in an estimated revenue aspect, we're anticipating three point three million one hundred and sixty-nine thousand and expenditures of two point eight, this isn't working, I apologize, uh, we're gonna be building the reserves to about three hundred thousand back to, uh, what we had last year. Um, so we're, in, all in a nutshell, we're trying to, uh, make sure that, that we are prepared for any time in the future that this may happen again, that we'll be able to build our reserves and, and finalize things. Uh, one last thing, we've, uh, been told by, uh, Anne Marie. Now it's locked up. Well, this isn't good. My apologies. We had this all tested yesterday and, you know, of course it's not working, so. Um, but just in a nutshell, we're not raising taxes, we're planning on building our reserves, uh, with the hopes to be able to build up and have, uh, the opportunity to, uh, to get where we were last year to, and continue to, uh, uh, build all the services and help, uh, the borough continue on, uh, improving, improving Bridgeville.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
Sorry, I don't know why it didn't work.
At least we got some of those on us.
Yeah. But, but we will, we will put this, uh, on a PDF and make it available on the Bridgeville website for anyone that would, uh, like to review it. Uh, the presentation will be up there, um, to be able to, to go through, to, to... Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, with that said, uh, motion of the Borough Council regarding resolution number two zero one eight dash one two, a resolution approving the budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen and adapting the same. Budget workshop public meeting was held on November twenty, two thousand eighteen with the budget, proposed budget available for public inspection meeting on November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen meeting. The ten, meeting, the ten-day public inspection required for Borough cut... I'll move. First to Joe. Calorucci?
Second.
And Bruce Calorucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, get my head. Treaty reports, administration, Bruce?
I don't have any report of any, I'd like to thank our offices and Adam Clark for this, the job that, uh, this year. Looking forward to next year. That's really wrong, so, just thank you, thank the police department and, uh, and the party department for what they've done for us.
Sure.
That's all I have.
All right. Uh, finance, Joe?
I'd say enough.
You said it. Parks and Rec.
Uh, no report, but the deadline for the next news better will be January sixteenth, next council meeting, that's all.
All right, public works?
Well, nothing in the normal stuff, Mr. Champion, the only thing, you know, there's one line here where we remove the snow, but, uh, that's one time. But so, uh, it'll be the rest of the year or many months, we don't know that. We have any solve, uh, it's sad to see the military banner go away, but it looks so nice, but we have to take them on sometimes in the winter time. It's a, it's a very good honor to those people, and we certainly appreciate that we implemented that and with a lot of help and so forth. Uh, it's a good thing to do. Other than that, there's just been a regular maintenance, uh, cars and, uh, trucks and, and streets and so forth, nothing major. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, public safety, Bill?
Just working on a couple of parking issues with, uh, chief in town and, um, working through those, it's, it's, I don't, I've got to worry.
Awesome. Uh, madam mayor?
I want to thank the public works department for what they do all year, particularly for Christmas, the lighting is tremendous. And also want to thank the B C A, the fire department and the borough for the winter blast event, which was well attended and enjoyed by all. On December... On December 14, I've been asked to speak at Chertier's Valley High School as part of six women speaking for future women of Pittsburgh sponsored by Chuck Barber, who's a teacher there at the high school. Thank you all for a very successful year and grateful that businesses have been able to be reopened and that we have been united together. Thank you.
Just to add some, Ms. Madam Mayor, that ladies happen to be my neighbor, particularly. She's supposed to be here tonight and tell that successful of the ladies that's coming on in the world, especially in United States, share some paper to show us and amazing, it's a big organization. They meet in a very high-class hotel in town and they pay the promoter and everything. But the concept was that the women today, they are on top of good jobs and as you see in political field, center, and everything. So that's congratulations, all the beautiful women. Amen. All you women. All you ladies. I think it's wonderful.
Police Chief.
Thank you, Council President. On November 15, at 3:45 in the morning, we had our first fatal car crash since 1996 in the borough. It was on Bauer Hill Road between Railroad Street and McLaughlin Run Road. It was one vehicle, one person, and unfortunately, it was a fail. We had the winter blast last week, which we attended. We passed out toys that were donated to us from Jazz Wares Company, an individual that's big waving their company is from the Bridgeville area originally. And he reached out to me, it was shortly after the floods, through Facebook and mentioned that he worked for a toy company and would be able to provide toys at any time if needed. So we took advantage of that for the winter blast. We also have some generous toy donations coming from Global Glorious Productions and Toys for Tikes and we'll be handing those out to kids. We're going to do the annual Buddy of the Elf adventure again this year. It'll be on Sunday, December 23rd. Not set on the time yet, probably 11 o'clock in the morning. And we're going to work with the fire department on it because after that, that's when Santa and Mrs. Claus will be going through town also. So we have a couple of nice donations of toys coming up in the next few weeks. We should be able to provide toys to any child that shows up. And we'll start promoting that later this week through the Facebook page.
All right. Thanks. Slister, Tom.
Thank you, my written report. I guess anything I'd add to that is what he says regarding the women.
Ladies.
The boys better watch it because they're taking over the water. Looking forward to it. I just wanted to tell you how present I am in the presence of my serving here again. And I do want to tell you again, express my appreciation, in particular for the heartwarming people, well-wishing that I received on my recent passing, my father, when I came back. My favorite. Thank you.
Engineer Seitz.
Thank you, you're my full, once you have any questions, I'll let standards in. Again, thank you for letting me be your engineer for 2018. I'm looking forward to the future and everyone have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Fire Chief, Phil.
Mr. President, as the chief said, yes, on the 23rd, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be coming around town. We'll be starting around 1 o'clock, so look for us throughout the time that day, that afternoon. We'll be handing out our usual lollipops and dog treats, so if you have your animals, bring them up.
What you guys are doing, yes, I thought I heard you.
That wasn't it though, because other communities have already started. We always go closest to Christmas. So we'll be doing that. Thanks for the support with our Mega Ticket too, it's doing very well. So we're getting more and more every year. But the only thing is, just like Councilman Donruci had up there, this was a very, very busy year for us in the fire service here in Bridgeville. My goal is by January to have a really detailed report for you of what we did in 2018 as far as calls. Our average, just to let everybody know, we usually average about 225 to 258 year in calls. And as of today, we're over 500. We're actually probably pushing 6.
If you take out just the flood.
The flood.
If you take that out, you're still ahead, maybe still more.
We're still way above this year. If we take out the flood ones, I'm going to say we're well over 300, pushing 400 this year. It's just been a very, very busy year for us. One of the things that's boosted us up, but it's been a very good support for EMS is the QRS calls. We have a lot more of them and you'll see it break down next month on that, but it's been a huge success to, for the residents and people in Bridgeville. And again, have safe Christmas, New Years and Merry Christmas from everybody from the fire department, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Phil.
We don't want to see under person.
Historical deciding, Mary.
Me?
Yeah.
Thank you. And again, very short. Tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at the Old railroad station, previous library, Dr. Euler will be speaking about, I think it's the years 1955 and 56 at Bridgeville High School. Then I'll know on Wednesday, this is how organized is, Wednesday morning on the email will be what's going to be in January. He's really quite a very good historian, but he is a doctor also and engineer. And I'm waiting for what they had to say about what we're going to do about building Also, the Friday before Christmas, which I think is the 21st, anytime between 10 and 2, please stop there. It's going to be open, it's always open anyway, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Let's come in, we have a mini museum you can look at, we've got five vertical file folders full of information about the Bridgeville area, not just Bridgeville area. But please feel free, if you come at 2 o'clock, fine, because I'll probably be there till 4 or 5, have to run the suite for after that. And the next thing important is that we did get two tickets to Penguin game at the end of March or near the end of March. They're in our possession and we will be starting our Apple tickets probably mid-January. And for the moment, except for saying, have a very Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year and thank you to all that you do, all of you for Bridgeville. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Bridgeville Library.
It was so nice to see the library on the video budget report on the monitor. Thank you so much.
It's our prettiest building in town.
It has one of the biggest mortgages in town. I'm here just to remind you that right now, we currently have the Festival of Trees at the library. This is actually the 14th year for the Festival of Trees at, through the Bridgeville Public Library. Carol Burney was one of the, brought the idea 14 years ago. I can't believe I remember being in a room and she brought this idea. It was something she was motivated with from her hometown. It'll be available for reviewing till December 16. There was also some beautiful statuary from our mayor, I understand. Did you bring some of your collectible...
My collection of angels.
Your collection of angels. And it's very...
And my laboratory features all the women in the borough, fire department and so forth and so on.
Yes. Thank you so much, Betty, for all the special things that you've done for our community. And thank you all to the borough members as well for listening to us. One of the things that you're going to be receiving if you're in the Bridgeville community is a letter that was signed by me. And this is our annual campaign for the Bridgeville Public Library, so I'm hopeful that you can take some time to look over the brochure, look at some of the ideas that we've kind of compiled of the things that are going on and that we do, and that you would consider donating to the Bridgeville Public Library. And thanks to everyone for this year of 2018.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nina, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing, we, you know.
All right. Oh, Bridgeville, you're in the parking corner. Andrew, Tom.
I provided my written report. The only thing that I do want to touch on is, as you know, as of January 1st, we're starting with the new hauler, garbage hauler company, Westmoreland Landfill LLC.
Do you have dates when you're going to have dates?
We have provided them with the addresses and names of all our customers and they will be sending out individual letters to all of our customers, letting them know, you know, when they'll be picking up and just giving them general information about the company. So I expect that to be happening in the next week or two.
And it's the old Facebook.
We'll put it on Facebook, we'll put it on the website, just so that everyone, you know, when there's a change, it gets a little bit confusing and it probably will take them a little while to learn the runs.
Interesting, I saw in the paper tonight, that waste management will no longer be collecting glass as part of the recycle.
Really?
And so many communities around here, so our decision to not go that route, it was not that big of an impact for us, saving money too.
Yes.
Apparently it has something to do with the cost of the recycling itself. Really, we don't keep recycled materials in this country, we should go overseas to be recycled and the cost of, if there's something contaminated, it's a heavy defeat to the hauler, the collector.
Yep.
The shame.
Yeah, it is.
All right, just send it in. Sorry, that's okay.
Other than that, if you have any questions on our report, we'll keep you updated and try to make sure that we put everything out on Facebook and the website so that residents are aware.
Great.
And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, it's been a pleasure, Courtney, everyone, I should.
All business. The whole business? New business? Before, I want to thank everybody, especially Jim, the flight, all you guys, fire department, Lori and, I was worried about you in the summer. You and your team, chief, all your guys, great job this summer. It was an unusual year for us, Public Works, everyone. Happy, Merry Christmas, everybody. Any questions? All in favor? All right, or opposed? See you next year.